I'd like to call to order the September 5th meeting of the New Canaan Board of Education. In front of you, you have a copy of the minutes from our August 21st meeting. If you could take a look at them and when you have a chance, if I could get a motion to approve the August 21st meeting minutes. Sheri, second. Hazel, all those in favor who were there? And any opposed and abstentions? Okay, thank you. Moving on, you have before you the agenda for this evening's minutes. If I could get a motion to approve the agenda as you have before you. Brendan, second. Jen, all those in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. Moving on to comments from the public. To ensure the public's right to be heard, the board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes will be allotted to each speaker and a maximum of 15 minutes to each subject. Do I have anyone who would wish to address the board this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to reports and recognition. The first item under reports and recognition is the opening of school reports by the building principals. Dr. Lettsi?
Yes, and as we do each year, the first meeting after our opening day, we invited the principals from each of our buildings to join us just to give us a brief update on their opening day and kickoff to the school year. So I'll ask Principal Wolick from East School to please come up to the podium and speak. In the past, we've handed the mic around and had them speak from the tables, but speaking with Tony, it's better for them to speak at the podium. So this is not to create an air of formality. It's simply television.
Thank you, Dr. Lettsi.
Welcome, Chris.
So our school year at East actually began before the first day as we welcomed 45 new to East students in grades one through four. That's the most I can remember us having in one year for a visit on August 23rd to give them the opportunity to tour the building when it's a bit quieter and hear from other student greeters who are returning students a little bit about what makes East School great. On that same day, we greeted 97 new kindergarteners out on our playground to welcome them as official kindergarteners to East School. They had an opportunity to play with each other on the playground. And then our week was topped off with an ice cream social hosted by our East PTC. It was our fourth annual ice cream social, and we really had the best turnout we had had. It was a beautiful, beautiful sunny Sunday afternoon. And then on August 30th, we welcomed all of our 532 students back to school. We have 28 sections this year in the building, and our staff includes several teachers who have moved into East from other buildings in the district, and we really appreciate having their experience in the district and are excited to have them join us at East. Our faculty launched the year with their traditional potluck lunch, which brings everyone together a real sense of positive energy in the building. We have some main office updates in terms of paint and carpeting. If you have not seen that, we invite you to stop by and visit our office. We have new tables in our kindergarten classrooms. We have a climbing wall for the gym that's on its way, all of that thanks to our PTC. So there's a newness to the year that just feels terrific. Our staff enjoyed faculty meetings and professional learning sessions during those days just leading up to the first day of school that really highlighted aspects of positive psychology. I know Dr. Lettsi shared some of that at convocation. And we've talked a lot about collaboration, communication, and ways that our responses to situations that may emerge over the year really is what matters in determining outcomes. In some of that messaging that we're now doing with students, and you'll see in our community growth focus for the year, we're committed to building in students an understanding of respect and an understanding of how to self-monitor and self-regulate their reactions to situations because by having that ability to self-monitor and self-regulate, they're better able to then demonstrate respect towards their peers and towards other adults in the building. So our teachers are fostering in students self-awareness of what they're feeling, self-awareness of their emotions and their reactions. They're involving students in reflecting on behaviors, some goal-setting, and some strategies for responding to situations that may occur during the day. We also hosted welcome-back assemblies on Friday this past week, and we highlighted the word gratitude as one way of demonstrating respect towards others and used it as an opportunity to introduce important staff members at East. These members included our secretaries, our custodians, our cafeteria staff, our teaching assistants, other members outside of the immediate classroom teacher that we wanted to assure our students knew and thought about in terms of the work they do to make East School a wonderful place to learn. We also have a thank you bulletin board if you do stop by East. It's a bulletin board that students have been signing right as they enter the front foyer area. So it was blank, other than the words "thank you" when we started the year, and already classes have been coming by, students have been stopping on their way to and from this missile to sign the board. So it's filling up with names. Our goal is to have 532 names there, and it's a thank you to our custodians and our secretaries. What we wanted students to understand is that while so many of us enjoyed vacations over the summer, these people were in our buildings working hard to prepare for the upcoming year. They were navigating summer programs, juggling new orders for the year, cleaning the building, and really I do thank them also for a job very well done this summer. Finally, we are looking ahead to integrating technology this year more and more into our curriculum. That's one of the learning focus points that we have as a staff and that our staff will be talking quite a bit about to look at how to promote student access to higher-order thinking through the use of technology and also how to build cognitive engagement in students through that use of technology. We're looking forward to sharing all of this with our families, and so we are also utilizing technology for that communication. If you haven't seen our welcome-back video message posted on the East School website, we invite you to look there and also to follow our Twitter feed. That's new for East this year as well. We're just trying some different ways to communicate with families to help them have a sense of what's happening each day at East School because there's lots of exciting things that happen, and we know sometimes when an elementary student comes home, they may not always be able to articulate all of that. So we want to be able to give our families some snapshots of the day at East. So we hope you'll follow us throughout the year, and we know that there'll be lots to share. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. And what Chris didn't mention is that you never know what's going to happen on an opening day. So on the morning of our first day, we had a tree down on one of the roads that took down some power lines and caused a small fire in the road. So we had to reroute some buses and call some houses and speak with some families and parents and reassure them that when they get to school, we'll be waiting for them and everything will be fine, and Chris and her staff, of course, expertly managed that as well. Thank you, Chris. I guess we'll go in alphabetical order, Ms. Rocco, if that's okay with you. And I'll ask Joanne Rocco, our principal from South School, to let us know about opening day and how we're doing.
Thank you. It's always hard to follow Chris Wallach. We had a great start to our school year. We have 544 students. We have 29 sections, which is an increase of one section this year. We had 28 last year. We have 38 new students. One of our new first graders had the ride of his life this year when somehow he ended up on the wrong bus and got brought to Saks, and one of the police officers, I think it was Jeff Deek, picked him up in the police car, turned down the siren, pulled into the South School parking lot, and brought him into the front office. So now he thinks that's normal for everybody who comes to South School. What a way to start the school year, though. He wasn't fazed by it at all. He thought it was great. We have three new classroom teachers, and one of our new classroom teachers actually was a former South School student. And she went kindergarten through fourth grade at South School, and all of her former teachers from kindergarten through fourth grade are still at South School. So that makes us feel really, really old.
And good.
What's that?
And good, too.
And good, and good, that's right. But it's exciting to have her there. Our custodians and our secretaries did a fabulous job during the summer. I think it was one of the busiest summers just because of enrollment and a lot of newly registered students through the summer. They did a fabulous job of pulling the school together and getting everything done. As Chris mentioned, our main office looks so great, thanks to Dan Clark with new carpeting and new painting, so that looks really nice. Our PTC has been fabulous. We have a great PTC executive board. They had a lot of events to welcome our new families, and that really helps kids to start the year and not be as anxious, and parents also to feel part of our school before school actually starts. They worked with Peter Dean, who was one of our former South School parents, and renovated our staff dining room, so that looks really nice. We have a South Garden Committee, and you'll have to stop by and see it. It's amazing what it looks like and the work that's gone into that. So there's a big initiative around a garden and incorporating it into our curriculum. One of our parents has done all of our landscaping, which looks really nice in the front of the school. He's done that for the past five years for us, so the front of our school looks beautiful. PTC has a lot of initiatives around STEM, author's visits. We have Harry Bliss. I don't know if you know the books Diary of a Worm and Diary of a Spider, some of my favorite books. He's coming to speak with our kids this year. Dan Gutman, who also is a famous author. So our PTC really has been working really hard during the year to get a lot of great things in place for our school year. We have two goals. One of our school goals is service to others, which we've done in the past, and we really liked how it worked out. It would be on three different levels, either service to the school or within the school, service to our local community, whether it's New Canaan or some surrounding communities, or service to the more global world. Our kindergarten team is looking at connecting with Way of Any Care. It's just a walk down the street. So our Halloween parade that we have for kindergarten, after they parade through the school, they're going to walk down to Way of Any Care and parade through for all of the residents there, which I think will really brighten their day, and kindergarteners just love being in their Halloween costumes. Our holiday concert, either they're going to invite residents to South to hear the kindergarten concert or bring the concert to Way of Any Care for those who can't travel. Valentine's project with some of the residents. So I think that's a really nice connection within our community. So teachers are developing their projects, and we really want it to be meaningful to kids, not just to give something, but to understand how it makes you feel when you give and what it does for the person who's receiving also. Second goal is around incorporating movement into the day because we know that kids can't sit for very long, and just exercise. There's so much research around it and how it helps children to learn. So we've been partnering with Susan Bliss, our Student Support Coordinator, and Helen Nishi. I don't know if you know Helen, but she's our OT. She has more energy than the most energetic kindergartner in our school. So Helen's all in for this. A lot of research that teachers have done last year and really incorporating it into the academics and the instruction, but also just movement breaks and exercise. All the staff members will have some individual goals around this, some classroom goals, also some school-wide initiatives. And we're also talking about staff because I know when I stand up there at a staff meeting, I see some heads nodding, and maybe we need to include some movement into our meetings, too, where we get people up and we get staff moving also. But also just some thoughts about indoor recess, which we have often during the winter, and just how do we get kids exercising during an indoor recess where they're not just sitting in a classroom playing some games? So a lot of exciting initiatives and a lot of exciting goals, and we're off to a great start, so we're looking forward to a really great year. So thank you.
Thanks, Joanne. Then I'll ask Jen Murphy, our principal over at West, to share with us an update on opening day over there. Thank you, Jen.
Thank you, and good evening, everybody. I'm really proud to say that it was a great day at West. That was one of the slogans and the mottos that we came up with after our work with Dr. Lettsi and the administrative group. One of the things Dr. Lettsi had said in his back-to-school letter was, "We shape both the minds and the hearts of our students in what we say, and more importantly, in what we do." So Ashley Fornari, our assistant principal, and I put that quote out to our faculty, and together jointly, we kind of came up with the idea. We came up with the idea of saying, you know, it's a great day at West, but create a great day at West, and what does that look like and how can we do that? So this year, our motto is to be kind and make it a great day at West. Through some of that positive psychology, Joanne Rocco was actually my motivator, I guess, for what we call the Fun 15, and that was where we each committed to do something healthy for ourselves for 15 minutes a day. And I have to say, Joanne was great. She was always texting me and reminding me, but I haven't really kept up my end of the bargain. So I'm going to say it publicly, I'm going to start again tomorrow, and I'm going to be looking for those texts tomorrow, Joanne, that keep kept me going. So at West School, we welcomed a total of 453 new students to West. We had our New to West event on August 24th. That was a larger number than we had had in the past. We had 26 new families that included 29 new students, students as far away from the Dubai International School, Dallas, Texas, and Chicago, and some from as close as South and East School. We had our first faculty meeting last Monday, and staff was involved in professional learning where they met with curriculum coordinators to gain updates on various curricular areas. And during our first faculty meeting after the convocation, our staff brought in, and this is again something that Brian modeled for us as an administrative team, we brought in all of our custodians and secretaries and gave them a round of applause and thanked them for the outstanding job that they had done all summer. As you know, we were displaced over at West, as were East and South, for about three or four weeks with our office being re-carpeted and repainted, and it was just an enormous team effort, talk about collaboration and working together, enormous effort to make that all happen. And publicly, I'd love to say thank you to Dan Clark, who did such an outstanding job collaborating. He would stop by every single night on his way home to make sure I was calm, to make sure that everything was going well, and he did an outstanding job following up. So our enrollment this year at West is at 24 sections, which is a decrease of two sections from last year. In grades kindergarten and first, in grades kindergarten and one, we currently have four sections. Grades two and four have five sections, and grade three is our biggest bubble with six sections. We have some new staff that we have welcomed to West. We have a new speech and language pathologist, Allison Elwell, a new occupational therapist, Suzanne Hekt, a new reading teacher, Jennifer O'Connell, not new to West but new to the position, Patrick Murren, who has brought some great ideas for our library media specialist. And we have a new school psychologist at West coming to us from South, Aileen Duhan. She's actually already gotten started and jumped right in with finding ways that our kiddos can help with some service projects for the hurricane victims down in Houston. So that's something that we've got started and off the ground running. We're also welcoming three interns from Sacred Heart and Southern who will also be doing their student teaching at West. And I brought along, every year, we kind of kick off the year with a book. This is another of my favorite author, Peter Reynolds' book. It's called The North Star. And again, once again, our gracious PTC has offered to purchase those for each of our classroom teachers. They're not in yet, but the North Star really becomes a metaphor for the work that we hope to do with our learning community and tied to our SAPPLE framework about really finding out who you are and finding your own path in life. And we're using the star as a metaphor for the word empathy. And last year, one of our school psychologists did some research to kind of get some information about where students are at with student self-awareness and their knowledge of empathy. So we're going to use some of that research and kind of launch some work in that area for our learning community growth. This year, we did a summer enrichment program called What Is Westy Doing? And so over the next few weeks in our morning meetings, we're going to be encouraging students to unpack some of the summer learning that they did, that they might not think they did through the eyes of Westy and what they were doing with Westy. We had a great welcome-back luncheon on Friday. One of our moms carved an incredible version of Westy the Whale out of a watermelon and filled it with all kinds of fruits, and it was delicious. She made beautiful centerpieces, so it was really, it was just nice to be so welcomed back to school. We have our open house dates coming up in September, the 19th for grades K1 and 2, the 26th for grades 3 and 4. We had our first fire drill today, and it went great. It took us less than seven minutes to account for all students. Everyone was safe. And then we have our back-to-school assembly this Friday. And then, let's see, we're also participating in our Ben's Bell Project this year. And again, I'd just like to acknowledge the work that our Buildings and Grounds Group did with our new office and paint, carpeting and paint. The mulch for the playgrounds looks incredible. It's amazing how much better they look. And then one of the other things that we kind of didn't know we were going to be doing, but we did over the summer, was we had the pipe, that Aquarian, you know, put in over at West, we had that actually put in underground. So the grass is still growing over there, so that was another project that went very smoothly and was on time, and I just, again, have to say kudos to that group for putting that all together. So it was a great first week. Thanks.
Thank you, Jen. Greg, is there anything happening over at Saks that you'd like to talk about? Mr. Macedo, a principal at Saks. Hello, Greg.
Good evening. After hearing the elementary reports that I have to raise my game, I think, next fall, the school really looks fantastic. I think all of you know that our students had a very strong opening. You know, every year, we remark that it feels like we just left, and the kids just pick up right where you kind of left off. And I have to say, we were surprised how many new children came to Saks this year, and that seems to be the theme resonating in the district. So I guess the real estate market's also doing well. We have at Saks 82 new students across a total population of 1,339. We did have 67 withdrawals, so there is a lot of movement, and I think sometimes we have to make a little extra special effort to make sure our new students feel fortified. Sounds like the elementary schools have already got that well underway, and will hope to continue that as they rise up to our school. Last week, we also encountered new teacher orientation, and we inducted some new staff. We were lucky enough in the budget to have a new Saks math specialist position prevail, and we were also lucky enough to promote one of our own Saks math teachers, Nicole Graham, into that position. So in her place, right, it created a vacancy, we had Rachel Kylie, who's a former math long-term substitute at Saks. She was promoted to a full-time certified position in grade six. We also had some movement in the instructional coaching department. Jonathan Adams' role has been expanded in the K-12 health and PE coordination, and so in his place, we've hired a freshman basketball coach and certified health teacher, Mike Tisha, to join us at the middle school faculty. We're glad that he's aboard. And finally, we had a teacher, unfortunately, who had decided to move away closer to family, and we've replaced her with Ashley Walsh, who's our new grade seven science teacher. In special education, we also inducted three new certified staff, speech and language therapist, and also parent in the community, Ann Ronsky, school psychologist Samantha Gagliano, and learning strategies teacher, who was a former teaching assistant at Saks, Maria Di Robertis. As I said, our student enrollment is 1339, our largest cohort. We graduated to the ninth grade, so our next largest cohort in the school is our seventh grade, currently at 352, but our fifth grade in a close second at 345. I want to thank Dr. Clapp and Dr. Ferreira. They worked so hard over the summer. Dr. Clapp is managing all the new fifth grader schedules, and you can imagine what that means to take fifth graders from three sending schools and balance them appropriately so that they form into 16 homerooms. And then Dr. Ferreira is responsible for the 6-8 schedule, and balancing over 995 students into the bevy of courses that we offer with the levels of math is certainly a Herculean task, and you would never know from talking to her of all the effort that she has to put into it. So I want to give kudos and a shout-out to both of them. I think everybody who's been around the building knows how I feel about my custodial staff this summer. I've been here quite a while, and I've never seen a team pull together under such challenging circumstances to open a school, not just on time, but just beautifully well-done. I mean, you can walk through the entire campus, and it shines everywhere you look, and it didn't look like that a month ago, I guarantee. I do want to thank Penny Rashid and the other members of the building committee. I think Penny put in more hours than my custodial staff this summer, and it shows. We're so, so happy that we were able to open the new addition on time. We're able to make tremendous progress in the other parts of the renovation, and it's rare that you can say that you're the principal of a large middle school that's bringing in a construction project on time and under budget. So kudos to Penny and the team that's behind that work. So what else do we know about the middle school? We know that middle school students will humble you. If you give them any opportunity, they'll take it. So here we are, the Tuesday before opening day. Penny and some others are on a press tour, opening the new addition so the community can get a first look, and we stumble upon a few Saks students who are eager to start their year, schedules in hand on the eve of opening day, scoping out the new wing, the new lockers, the new classrooms, the room numbers. I walk over to them in the little new student breakout area, which has some lounge and learn furniture, very attractive, and they get a little bit nervous because they think they're kind of in trouble because why is the principal coming over? And I assured them they weren't in trouble, it was okay for them to be there, we want them to feel comfortable on their first day. I said, "What do you think?" So the girls said, "We really love the new restroom, Mr. Macedo. Good job." And two of my boys didn't even answer because they were too busy kind of bouncing on the new bouncy chairs that are in the lounge and learn breakout. And it reminded me really that appearances and activities are really what our kids in the middle school are all about, and that's what we saw in the first three days. We saw our kids really come back to school with happy faces, certainly caring very much about their appearances at that age, but also very committed to getting it back into the activity. And so from their summer fun, they have been morphing very nicely into some fall productivity with regard to starting classes. So that's our day. That's our opening of school report, and I want to invite any of you as you're around the campus to stop by and take a look. We also have some improvements that our Saks PTC did in the main lobby. You'll notice how that meshes nicely with some of the new tones in the new addition. So welcome back to the school year. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Greg. And last but not least, we have Mr. Egan, our high school principal.
I think Greg also made it hard for me to follow that, but that's all right. When I first started here three years ago, Dr. Lettsi had told me, "Now, on the first day of school, you want to make sure you're there early." And I'm like, "Oh, what does that mean?" And he's like, "Well, you know, you usually get to school a little bit early, get a half hour early. Try an hour." So usually, you come in the first day of school, you get here around 6:15, and the school's full. The seniors are downstairs already setting up in the cafeteria, music blaring and kind of posters getting set up in the building. They've already decorated the outside, so you'll see the chalk marks and their decorations outside welcoming the other classes. Generally, it's always positive, but the excitement level could not be higher. But the one thing that's amazing to me is how quickly they can turn it around. So we're music blasting to first period, they're in class and ready to go. You know, on the first day of school, we made it around to every classroom in the building. And truth, they're all already collaboratively working together, focused on the work, and it's an amazing testament, really, not only to the kids but to the community, that they can have that much joy and enthusiasm on a regular basis, but then be ready and focused to work, too. Again, just like everyone else, we started with wonderful orientation activities with our kids, met with every class, the freshmen on the first day of school, and really, we told them all, being our biggest class, but we told them all that we're glad to have them, we love them, and if there's things that they need, they can always come find us. Same message was given to every class. We wanted them to be leaders, make good choices, and be responsible, but know that we're here for them, we care about them. You know, a special thank you again goes out to, as everybody said, the custodians and the secretarial staff. They did an amazing job getting this place ready. And really, a special thank you to the central office staff as well for the support they've given, and all of you as the Board of Education. You know, truly, this place has made a remarkable facelift in the last few years, the amount of landscaping that's outside from our parent community that's put in. The Wagner Room here is brand-new with the carpeting. Our library is totally redone. Our fields are getting redone on the outside of the building. You know, it really is a special community that, over summer, they can kind of do all of that work and be ready to go. There are not many places that can do that. You know, so in truth, you heard a lot of talk about positive psychology and our focus, everybody's focus around the district is building that positive psychology in our students, but it really starts with you. I think you guys set a tone for all of us, and I just want to thank you. So thanks again.
Thank you, Bill. You know, I have a saying that I try to live my life by, which is, "Great things happen when nobody cares who gets the credit." And all five of our principals are very quick to hand off the credit to everyone around them, and rightfully so, because the teams in each of our building work amazingly hard, long hours, and they're really, there's no quit in them until the job is done, and it really shows on that first day as the kids come through. But I also want to say thank you to each of you for all of your great work, because those teams do what they do, thanks to your work, your leadership, your direction, your guidance, your modeling of that great work. So it's, I know that you hand the credit off very quickly, but I'm going to make you take it back, at least partially, because all take it back, at least partially, because all this happens thanks to the five of you in your buildings and the awesome pride that each of you takes in the work that happens in your building every day, which really starts before the kids arrive, but becomes quite visible the moment they all do. So thank you for that. I want to just quickly share with the board and with you that we, the five of us, Jill, Darlene, Gary, Joanne, and I, met here at the high school early in the morning on the opening day. We had a chance to watch the students come in and talk and meet with a few folks out in the front plaza while they did. And then we left here, and we went right over to Saks, and we walked a little bit around the new addition, saw some of the students, and saw our fifth and sixth graders coming in off the bus. We had a chance to meet with them. And then we shot over to West. We got there in time for their arrival, and we were able to see the students arriving over at West. After which, we shot over to South, and we spent a little bit of time at South and saw some of the parents and the, what was happening outside with some students in the playgrounds, what have you. And then we went over to East. And over at East, we did this last year as well, we were able to see the kindergarteners coming in. And you know, we do on that first day, half the class comes in with their parents for a while, they go home, and the other half comes in. And we were able to see the kindergarteners as they came in for the first time with their parents. At every spot, every stop, we saw the administrators, the teachers, everybody, so excited to welcome the students in. And we saw the students, some of the schools literally getting off the bus and running as fast as they could into the building. Like, I was telling students to slow down as they're approaching school for the first day. Not at the high school as much as the elementary schools. [laughing] But it really was just such a joyous environment, and such a great place. And I want to thank, of course, the members of the cabinet as well for everything that they did in preparation for our opening day. It really does take everybody doing everything that needs to get done, right up to that last minute. And Greg, you were generous when you said it didn't look that way a month ago. I argue it didn't look that way a week and a half ago, because of everything that happens. You know, we've been operating a district without a middle school in the summertime for the last couple of summers, which meant that all programs that typically would have run in the middle school have been running in all of our elementaries and the high school and the others. So that really puts a lot of strain on our custodial crew, that because they can't necessarily get Saks-ready because we're doing the construction, doing that work, but they also can't get into those other buildings to clean different areas. So it's all at once, they had to get it all done, and they really did across the district. Of course, the scheduling and everything else that it takes, the communication, the meeting, the time, really just very, very impressive work to have the opening like we did on Wednesday. So I think folks are feeling very good now that we are, we're through the Labor Day weekend. Now it's sort of the rubber hits the road a little bit, and we start to get into our routines. And so far, as I talk to students and parents a little bit here and there, and talk to teachers, everyone's still feeling very good about the opening and the direction that the schools are going in, and the goals that they're setting, and the work that we're doing. So congratulations to each of you, you know, to everybody in your buildings as well. Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, I just, I just wanted to say thank you. It's exciting and encouraging to hear all the enthusiasm that's being generated throughout the district. I mean, I think as a board, it's what we work toward all year-long, to hear these great stories about what's happening in the district and what's happened over the summer. So thank you. And like, does anyone else have anything they'd like to say or questions? Hazel?
It's not a question, it's just saying how remarkable to have all those new students and for you all to have gone to so many efforts, through so much effort, to be able to have them be feeling comfortable and enjoying their schools. So I thank you also for that specific thing.
Okay. That's it? Thank you very much, and I guess we'll, yeah, please feel free to leave. I know you have another early morning tomorrow morning, so.
[laughing] Given all that you've just told us you're doing, you need to go home and get some sleep. [laughter] Thank you all.
Moving on to the end of your budget report with Dr. Keating.
Thank you. They say it's hard to follow one another. They should be me right now. [laughing] I get to talk about finances. So this is the final report for FY 2017 before you tonight. We spent the summer months, the department and the schools, closing out all the books, basically, and working to get the final statements prepared for the EDO-1 report, which is due at the end of August, and then preparing this financial report. So I'm going to take you section by section. It's a comprehensive report tonight that you're going to be reviewing. Starting with the operating budget, which can be found on pages three through six. As a reminder, the operating appropriation for this year was eighty-six million, two-hundred-and-forty-thousand, eight-hundred-and-forty-four dollars. Of that, we expended paid bills, eighty-five million, nine thirty-seven, six seventy-four. And we have encumbrances on the books of one hundred and seventy-two thousand, forty-four, for a total of eighty-six million, one hundred and nine thousand, seven hundred and eighteen. We expended ninety-nine point eight percent of our budget this year, which is remarkable when you consider where we were last year. We had returned to the town eight-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand dollars last year. This year, we'll return one-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand. So I think we've come a long way. I credit a lot of it to the Munis Position Control Payroll Budgeting Function that we have now. It's helped us quite a bit. But also to the flexibility that we have within our budget to meet other needs that occur throughout the year. If you would, I'd like you to turn to page three, so we can review the final transfers. And I would like to just point out a few things, if I may. When you take a look at the salary account and you go over a few columns to the total transfers to date, which is the final transfers for the year, we've transferred into this account from other accounts, one hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. But I'd like to point out to you that in the past, we always netted out our donations from athletics, which was about one hundred and twenty-five thousand. So this account, if that had, if we had followed our prior practice, would have been within twenty thousand on a fifty-four million dollar budget. So it just speaks to the fact that the Munis program has really helped us out quite a bit. Last year, we turned, returned quite a bit in the salary account. This year, it's basically very close to budget. When you take a look at some of the other accounts, they're off by maybe two-tenths of a percent on the total expenditure to budget. The accounts that went over a little bit more were on the property services, and we've talked about that through the year. We've had some unanticipated repairs in facilities, and it's one of those things that we just remind ourselves as part of the operation. The facilities are complex, and things do happen. And as well as we planned in the capital budget, it does happen from time to time. So for the end of the year, we talked about doing all the special projects that we're taking out of the two thousand eighteen budget. We were able to take care of all of those projects, but we had a few other projects that also came up. The rigging at the high school had to be replaced. We actually couldn't use it the last few performances of two thousand seventeen, and it's a very expensive refurbishment. They have to actually weld and prepare some of the parts to fit it, and that was almost seventy-five thousand dollars. In addition to that, we have two chillers here at the high school that support the whole building, and there's a lot of interior spaces that need to be cooled, so we need to have both of them working in case one fails. And sure enough, when we went to start them up for the beginning of the season, one was had failed. So that was a thirty thousand dollar expenditure. So all of these things kind of happen unanticipated. We have a PM program on this equipment, but over time, the age does present issues for us. So that's our largest transfer going in. At the end of the year, we were able to take care of a few equipment needs that we have. I would encourage you all to go down to the library. Came out really awesome, very exciting down there. We did purchase some furniture for that space to kind of segregate it out a little bit. We have some cafe tables on the top to keep the kids, when they're eating, you know, closer into that area. And then on the bottom, we brought some new tables and chairs for that space as well. We also have the ability to cover the excess cost grant that we thought we would have to tap into. When we did the reforecast, the special education budget appeared to be about two-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand over budget, the available budget, so we were going to access that from the town. But because we had small amounts in a variety of other accounts throughout the budget, we were able to take care of that expense. And then finally, our revenues came in sixteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty-eight dollars below. If you take a look at the budget for fees, the original budget was a hundred and one thousand, but because we trued this account up to reflect parking fees, gate receipts, donations, it's much higher than it would have been. However, our forecast, our reforecast of budget time was more optimistic than it turned out to be. So those are the sum totals of the transfers that you're going to be approving tonight. If you take a look at pages seven through eight, those are our federal and state grants. We received most of our grants from the federal government, Title I, Title II, Title III, and the IDA, which is our largest one and supports our special needs students. This past year, we were awarded one million, one hundred and forty-eight thousand, seven-hundred-and-four dollars worth of grants. We spent one million, five thousand, three ninety-two, and we have a balance of seventy-nine thousand, five oh six, available for next year. If you recall, during the budget process, we anticipated carrying over some of these funds so that we could pay for the two special ed TAs, so we'll be able to do that. We had those funds remaining. And you can take a look at the various grants on that page. If you have any questions, certainly ask. Moving on to the school lunch program, on pages nine through ten. The school lunch program, you know, is interesting. We had a lot of ambitions to improve the program more this year. Last year, if you'll recall, we instituted an after-school program for our athletics and our VPA students, or any students who wanted to stay after school, and it was very well-received. It brought in about a hundred and thirty thousand dollars in revenue last year. We wanted to do a more robust before-school program this current year, and with the change in personnel and the department and management, we weren't able to do that. We wanted to kick-start that again for this current year, because we really feel like there's a demand from the kids to have that type of program in the morning here at the high school. But when you take a look at revenues from last year and this year, we're still very close. In fact, we actually outperformed our target for revenue this year, even though we didn't implement that program, by more than fifty percent. Moving on, we combined facilities rentals, donations, and summer school on pages eleven and twelve. And just to remind you, the district did implement a new facility use fee structure this past year, and we went through the implementation process, which I felt did work very well. We had enough flexibility in the policy to really address issues that emerged that we hadn't anticipated, so we appreciated the ability to do that within the policy. We have retained money within the account, as we intended to do, for the purposes of replacing some equipment or providing improvements for all those that use the facilities. The statement that I'm always just absolutely amazed by is the Donation Fund, Fund Five. We received in cash donations from the town this past year from primarily the PTCs and the boosters and the parents, four hundred and thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars in cash donations this past year. But on top of that, we received ninety thousand, three hundred and nineteen dollars in non-cash donations, and a great example of that is all of the new plantings out in front of the high school. The PTC arranged that and paid them directly, but we capture those. So over a half a million dollars was donated to the district for a variety of things. That is just an amazing, an amazing amount of money. And the summer school program, we had last year, had to true-up that for the revenues that were received. The prior practice on summer school was to recognize revenue when we receipted it, which is in the spring for the summer. Our fiscal year ends June thirtieth, so we actually trued that up last year, and by doing that, we're able to get a true revenue and expenditure statement, and the net profit was sixty-four hundred dollars this year. So I think perhaps the fees and what we're spending are, kind of, found a sweet spot in terms of the overall break-even. And then finally, we have the Internal Services Fund, which is the very last page here. And this fund actually has gone through somewhat of a transition this past year in terms of the financials. At the beginning of this fiscal year, the teachers went from having the option to buy up to the PPO in their own contract. That was eliminated when the district prevailed in arbitration to have that removed and have the high deductible as the sole plan for that unit. And what happened there was, we had sixty-one teachers, I believe it was, who brought up. And so you'll see in terms of the revenue line item for teacher co-pay, quashare, it's down four hundred thousand. But the reason for that is that they didn't have the ability to do that buy-up. And in fact, a good number, which I need to get from Gary, did not even take the new insurance, the high deductible. They went to their spouse's unit. So we had a decrease in our numbers in this plan. Similarly, the retirees, when they had the option of going to the high deductible, they chose instead to go to the state plan. And so there was, there's a decrease in that line item. So there's an overall decrease in the revenue of about a million dollars. However, when you look at the claims experience, you're going to see a net decrease in claims of over two million. So the plan itself actually worked financially, but the numbers just have to be reallocated between the appropriate accounts starting next year. The IBNR also went up, twenty-nine thousand dollars. And finally, when you take a look at the total fund balance here, you're going to see that, you know, kind of in the middle column towards the middle of the page, you know, we calculate what the reserve has to be based on the town's policy, which is the town takes forty percent of the exposure, we take sixty percent in our fund. We have to go up from one hundred and twenty percent of our aggregate claims for this current year, from one-twenty to one-twenty-five because of the way the insurance was written. So that requires a larger reserve. With that said, because of the fact that our expenditures were so much less than our revenue, we were able to build up this fund and absorb that additional five percent. And interestingly enough, the numbers are so close to what this, seven hundred and fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred and thirteen, is only thirty thousand less than what we had projected in the reforecast, even with the numbers shifting between everything. So, and of that, five hundred thousand has been designated in the budget to offset this current year's claims. So overall, this fund is in, I think, the perfect position right now. I know that was a lot to throw at you.
Thank you, Joanne. It's always so comprehensive, and you do a great job outlining what's going on in the district. So I'd like to open up to anyone with questions on the, on any of the transfers or what's going on at the end of the year budget. Okay. Thank you.
Senator, if I could just take a moment to commend Joanne and her staff. As you know, the EDO-1 is the state financial report that has to be submitted in typically by September first, although this year, because of a furlough day, it was actually today, so the fifth. But her, Joanne and her staff, while, you know, they talked a little bit about the custodians, and Chris Wolick said, "While the families and those are on vacation, the custodians are in these buildings doing the cleaning," well, our finance team is also hard at work all throughout August, because that's really where they can close out some POs, finish up different things throughout the year, and really pull together this kind of comprehensive report and work through that EDO-1. So, Joanne, thank you, and thanks to your team for doing such a wonderful work and for, you know, it is, it's those dog days of August where we're all thinking, "Wow, you know, this is nice to relax and recoup prior to the school year starting up," and the finance team doesn't get to enjoy those days. [laughing] They're working hard throughout. So thank you for that.
Thank you.
Sherri?
So, Joanne, excellent job. I do just have one little question in regards to the facilities use policy. So just, I know that we implemented the new policy that Brendan and his team had helped advise, and because I don't want to see the year-over-year report here, can you just remind us if there was a financial impact due to the implementation of the new policy in terms of the new rates and...
Yeah, I can't actually. So the policy, and Brendan, obviously, you jump right in, but was designed to not only capture the direct costs that we incurred for like overtime for custodians, but it was also designed to capture some other costs that are less tangible, but certainly incurred by the district, such as energy and facility wear and tear. So the formula itself was designed to capture those incremental costs or those additional costs. Last year, I can tell you, on facilities rental, we brought in a hundred and thirteen thousand, five twenty-eight, as opposed, I think, to one thirty-seven.
Is it one seventy-seven?
Let's try.
Page eleven, right?
One seventy-seven? One seventy-seven. Oh, actually- So we brought in, last year we had revenue, I'm sorry, of $102,693, and this year it was $113,528. So the delta between the two is about $10,000. A little bit less than 10%, maybe 8% differential.
That's on page 12.
Yeah, page 12.
And you'll see the $113,528.
Okay, so it was roughly $10,000 more, but that was a smooth policy implementation, and there were no class organizations that stepped forward to say they were uncomfortable with the way that the policy was being applied to them, I'm assuming.
Well, I think that what happened was we tried, we certainly made a good effort to get out the news and to explain to people how the policy impacted the fees that they were paying. However, some people did come back, some groups came back and expressed concern about that, and that they didn't have perhaps notice prior to assessing fees to their participants. And so the policy itself is flexible enough for us to work with the groups, which we did. And I think that that was, it went a long way to build the credibility of the change, of how we handled the change, and knowing full well that next year, they had the information so now they can assess appropriate fees.
Great, thank you.
Penny?
Just interested in the insurance and going up to 125%. I know we had been for the staff loss gap insurance. I know we had been there for a number of years. We rebid it. A few years ago, we went down to 120%. I was just interested in what the background was behind, I guess, looking at the costs again and benefit and going back to 125.
Sure. So we went out to bid with the town. The town and the board issued a joint RFP for staff loss, which actually worked out, I think, very well. However, because we were right in the middle of having some adverse experience on specific, the carrier who was awarded the specific wouldn't take the aggregate on too. So we had to go back to Cigna, which was our, who was our carrier, and ask them to pick up the aggregate. So we actually have two separate staff loss vendors for this current year. We're hoping that that condition goes away next year. But they wouldn't take it at 120. They wanted 125 in order to give us the rates. So we had to, we had to basically go with it. However, we are covering that delta here in the fund, so the exposure isn't there for the board.
Right. Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you. So that will lead us right into the next part of our agenda, the action items. And the first item under our action items is the approval of the end-of-year unaudited financial statement. So if I could get a motion to approve the end-of-year unaudited financial report dated for 2017 and current period transfers presented. Okay, can I, Tom, second? Jen? All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to district goals, our second read. We had our first read of the goals last, at our last meeting two weeks ago, and we had some comments, and they've been incorporated into what was distributed in your Friday notes. So I guess, is there any?
Yeah, why don't I just take us to the document very quickly? The, and thank you, Deanna. The, a couple of quick changes, and the, what we did in the document in front of you is highlight those changes in the comments, just so you can see as a result of our conversations. So we did slightly change the language around school start times to be research and report on best practices related to that, based on our conversation, which is Goal One, Objective Two, C. And then on Three, Goal One, Objective Three, D, there's some new language there, again, based on our conversation and thinking about looking at the standards-based grading practices in science. There was a bit of conversation about that at the board as well, at the board meeting. If you go over to page three, Goal Seven is our world language goal. And Dr. Kranti, would you like to share a word or two about that?
Sure. So I had an opportunity to speak with Mrs. D'Amico and certainly go through the goals and update them accordingly. We hope to bring Lizette to, in front of the Board of Ed on October 2nd, I believe, to give a presentation on world language and EL. But in speaking with Lizette, what we wanted to do was take a look at the goal overall. We did have a good number of our students meeting that intermediate level. Lizette will explain in her presentation, though, that intermediate level is really wide. It's a large area. The next level is advanced, which would be a big jump if we just said we're going to move it to advanced. So she thought that it would be helpful to put it at intermediate high and to keep that high, you know, accountability for our students. We are continuing to monitor and report on the students that are participating in world language. Right now, we've seen an increase from 1,036 students enrolled in world language at the high school to 1,169. So certainly, we know that we have a large incoming freshman class, but she said that it's really the numbers at that high level of kids sustaining that language program for up until seniors. So we continue to watch those numbers at the Level Five. She does want to keep Objective B similar because she'd like to roll it out one more year. Last year was kind of a baseline data, so for her to adjust where the students are performing in that speaking portion would be difficult for her to right now. She would want to roll that out one more year to see where the students perform in those areas, but once again, she'll give you an update in that regard. Certainly, we need to take a look closely at our eighth grade students. So this year, we did have about 68% of our eighth graders start at Spanish III. And normally, they start at Spanish II as incoming freshmen. So that is really talking about our FLESS program, and certainly the middle school program and the kids moving into Spanish and sticking with Spanish. So right now, we have about 68% that are in Spanish III and about 32% of them that have moved into the traditional Spanish II. So one of the things that we'll need to continue to do as we move into Objective D is really take a close look at what we're going to need to do for that freshman class as they move into juniors and seniors, and what kinds of electives that we might want to be offering to them if they continue to with Spanish all four years while at high school here. Lizette's also going to talk a little bit about how we're going to start reaching out to the community members, similar to what we did with STEM, to see if there are people that are working in the workplace that can bring in interns that would be able to have the students using multiple languages. And so we thought that, it's been difficult for us to find those internship programs, but I just think we need to reach out to the community and see if people know people or have places that are close by that we could put some of our interns in. So that's where we are right now, and I think Lizette can give you an overall picture, but we thought that these goals, we didn't want to make those revisions to them before they went to the final read.
Yeah, one of the real, the challenges and the exciting pieces around this is we're sort of action research in the moment, because the students who've had FLESS now, as they move through the system and they come into the high school, we don't know, are they opting into French or a different language, or will they be opting into Spanish and how will it work? So it's, it does have important ramifications, because generally, teachers are certified in a language. There aren't that many folks who might be cross-certified in Spanish and French and other languages. So we really work very hard to balance those sections and to make sure our staffing model fits the student need. So it's a very important thing to keep a close eye on, so we're glad to keep it here.
We do still have the transition from fifth to sixth grade, where our sixth graders will choose to move into Latin or one of the other languages. And really, she spent a long time surveying those fifth-grade kids, and most of it is because they just want the experience of learning a new language, that they feel like they know Spanish because they've had it since kindergarten. So they want that opportunity.
And then they're opting back in in ninth grade.
But then they're opting back in in ninth grade, which is where we're seeing the increase happening with Spanish again.
Yeah. In Goal Two, as we discussed at the previous meeting, we simply moved the language around advocating for the needs of new Canaan students and things as a communications objective instead of being under Goal Five. We are continuing to utilize TEPEL, the implementation language. We felt like we were mature in the implementation now. So now it's always just sort of ongoing monitoring and adjusting along the way. You see that in Goal Three. In Goal Four, in speaking with Susan Bliss about this a little bit, there's a couple of new B and C were added, and this is also after the Board of Ed's conversation at our last meeting, just for some clarity, to develop and begin implementation of a K-12 school and district climate plan based on research and best practice. We've been doing this work for a couple of years now, but we're looking to formalize it a little bit. And then to provide professional learning opportunities and research-based prevention, intervention, and reporting protocols. Susan felt that both of those objectives were important for us to make explicit, you know, with the board and with the team as we circulate these out into the schools and into the, to the folks who are doing the work. And then the last one in Goal Five, Objective Three, just changed the language just a little bit for the enrollment and capacity committee, but my objective there is for that group to get together and maybe just a meeting or two to take a look at our enrollment projections, take a look at our building capacities, and just make recommendation around needing further study, or we think we're in a good place for now. So this isn't, this isn't a group that's doing a big study, but really looking at the data and just being able to guide us a bit about, you know, what, if it looks like we're in a good place, we go with that. If it looks like we need to get together and look at it more deeply, give an enrollment and building capacities, then we'll put that plan in place. And that would be a larger plan than this. This is more of just a quick dipstick as far as where we are with things, if that makes sense. And those are the changes since the first read, and we are open for discussion.
Okay. So do I have anyone who would like to make any comments or have any questions about the goals as we have them currently from the first read? Maria?
I'm not sure if this was from the first read, but on one copy of Goal Four, it said, it had began implement, it's not on the copy we got today, but a prior one said implementation of a district-wide approach for teaching SEL and SAPPLE skills. Under B, the school district climate plan, it looked like it was a subset at some point. Are we, are we teaching SEL, SAPPLE skills as a subset of the school climate plan? It's just not in the district goals?
We're using the SAPPLE framework as we have to guide our curriculum development work and things. We are looking at...
Do, I can send this down if you want to see it. It was on one of our copies.
One of the earlier copies that went around. So that language has been, been adjusted to, that language has been adjusted, I'm thinking, is that B in the copy that you have?
Right. I just want to clarify, you know, we have academic instruction, so if we're going to the other side of social-emotional skill instruction, is that happening? And is it still under that school climate goal?
Sure. And I would say that at this point, the, you know, we have our, our health program, as Jonathan shared with us last year, that we're looking at and revising and developing the work that we do across the buildings. Do we have it as a class that students take?
Right, it's integrated.
So they go to English, math, science, social studies, SEL, and world language? No, you know, we don't, it's not an explicit class like that. And that's not the plan, you know, as we look at and we think about, right now, we're in the development phase of, of developing the appropriate ways to build those skills with our students by integrating it into the classes and into the work that we do.
Right. The reason I ask is I think in general, overall, the goals look great. What I mentioned last time about parents being incorporated, not writing curriculum, but considered when curriculum's being written, I wish I saw that in the goals. Like, at some point, you know, our students are the consumers of the education. They might show parents something at home that you might not see at school. So if there was more of a collaborative approach, especially with all the changes coming to the curriculum with the high school revision, which will impact timing of classes, scheduling, assessments, those are changing, science standards. So that's just one thing I would like to see, a more integrated approach to include parent feedback, not just communication to parents, but coming back from parents.
So in Goal Four, Objective E, I think attempts to go, to discuss a little bit of, or to cover a little bit of what you're talking about, which is to conduct parent-community education sessions on school climate, health, and wellness, and school safety, consistent with our plans and the work that we're doing.
Right.
So I think it's because we know that this is a focus of our work in the year as far as the health and wellness piece and the, you know, school climate, and of course, the school safety. I think that's an attempt to do what you're saying.
I even highlighted that because I was thinking, you know, I don't teach math at home, but social and emotional skills I do teach at home. So where, you know, how do we collaborate so that I actually know that? I, you know, I don't want to be educated on what's done at school, I want to be part of the process. So if that could be elaborated somehow to include parents in the process.
Mm-hmm. So I think as we structure these sessions, we can certainly share that feedback with Susan, with Jonathan, and those who would be sort of running those, so that part of one of the goals is to help provide the parents with the tools and the information they need in order to reinforce and continue as you would in math and in English and other classes, so that they can support what we're doing here and vice versa, and we can support what they're doing there.
Right, exactly.
Absolutely.
Any other questions or comments? Penny?
On Goal Five, Objective, I have a really big one. One, I think the numbering's off because we're 1, 2, 3, 3, so we should probably be 1, 2, 3, 4, but...
We'll get that one.
Get that one, that was good. So, because actually, I had a comment on 4, and I was about to call it 3, so, that's why I looked at it. Okay, so I was wondering if we, under 4, we could just add a section that says some, well, I, regarding, specifically regarding enhancing energy efficiency. And I thought, this is my first crack at it, but continue work in evaluating and improving energy efficient, opportunities for energy efficiencies across the district in a fiscally prudent manner. Maybe it would be in evaluating and implementing...
Yeah, and we can, we can work to specify the language, but I think that makes good sense, given where we are with conversations about natural gas, conversations around solar, around fuel cells, around propane. We certainly are looking in this area, looking at energy and ways that we can do it in a sustainable way for our district, in a cost-effective way, and hopefully in a healthy way, you know, for the climate and what have you. So yes, I think that that does align with some of the work that we've been doing this year and will be continuing to do throughout this year and going forward.
Right. So I think it's actually, when you're doing it, it's just helpful to be able to point specifically to a stated Board of Ed goal also.
I love getting credit for things I'm already doing, so I think it's great.
Right. We could add a few more.
We're good. No, I think that, that makes good sense. That is definitely an initiative that we began. And actually, even this past summer, we've been working with Eversource, with the town bodies. We talked to them about the energy efficiency that was available through Eversource, and we've been doing a lot of that work as well. So this is something that's underway and will be going for the foreseeable future, so, thank you.
Should I get the language from Penny? If we're going to approve tonight, I need the language.
Okay.
Why don't we, Penny, do you have some language you want to pour down here? Because tonight's the second read, so if we want to add language, we need to have it in for tonight.
Let's continue. Continue the work in evaluating and implementing opportunities for energy efficiency.
Across the district in a fiscally prudent manner?
Pass that down. I think you might be able to read that. Brian, can wordsmith it?
Nice handwriting. I like, I'm really, yeah, sorry about that. Chicken scratch. I should have been a doctor.
Continue work in evaluating and implementing opportunities for energy efficiencies across the district in a fiscally prudent manner. Continue work in evaluating and implementing opportunities for energy efficiencies across the district in a fiscally prudent manner. Fiscally prudent and sustainable manner.
Oh, I like that. Yeah.
And that would be up to the board, too.
Yeah.
Evaluating and implementing.
Opportunities for energy efficiency across the district. As long as Lisa has it, we have it.
Do you have it, Lisa?
I think it's quite likely.
All right. All right. Well, I just, I don't know if I have to, because we have to approve that addition. So, okay. All right. Yeah. How about you do it? Because I can't read anything. All right. So before, before we get to that, though, are there any other? Brendan?
Yeah. On Goal One, Number Seven, in the modifications that were made to C, I think I should just say, I think all eighth grade students will perform at or above the low-intermediate level on the speaking portion, et cetera, rather than at that level.
Yeah, it does sound funny.
Yeah.
What was your change? I'm sorry.
All eighth grade students will perform at or above the low-intermediate level on the speaking portion of the actual assessment.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's good.
And that's aligned with the language in seven itself.
Right.
Okay. Any other, any other additions or things to discuss? Okay. So, since we have, it looks like we have two specific edits. So if I could get a motion to approve in, oh, shoot, I shouldn't have separated it that way. That's Goal...
This is One, Seven, C.
Okay. So if I could get the motion to approve the amendment to the goals to add the language in Goal One, Seven, C, to the at or above the low-intermediate on the speaking portion, as well as Goal Five, Objective Four, adding C. And Dr. Lutzi's going to read the language.
Which would say, continue work in evaluating and implementing opportunities for energy efficiencies across the district in a fiscally prudent and sustainable manner.
Okay. So do I have a motion to approve those amendments? Penny, second. Sherry, all those in favor? Any opposed? Okay.
So before we vote on the goals...
Okay.
I did have one other question, which I wanted to raise. I don't know if it would involve an amendment, but I just wanted to ask the district professionals about it, which was that a number of years ago, I think about six or seven years ago, we had the committee, which I thought was a successful committee, where we specifically looked at the guidance department at the high school. And as a result, we actually determined that we were under-resourced, and we provided some funds for the guidance counselors to visit colleges. And, you know, we have the wonderful updates from the guidance department every year, but I didn't know if, at some point, it might be good just to take a deep dive into that area again to make certain that that board and that group was properly resourced, and whether or not that would be a goal that we would look at or, so I just wanted, I know, it's really, it's really, it's under you, Darlene, and Brian, and we've lost our high school principal for the evening. But I would just throw it out there. I'm not quite sure what the right goal would be, but I just wanted to say that obviously something that the board and the community are always interested in.
Well, I would say perhaps the right way to begin is for us to do sort of some exploratory work, to take a look at our department and our resources and look at a few comparisons, maybe across the DURG a little bit and see where things are, and talk to a few folks, just to do some exploration and get some initial feedback. And based on that, if more work needs to be done in a group getting, being put together to dive deeper into it for, maybe if there are financial ramifications or others, then to make those recommendations. But for us to begin with an exploratory, Darlene and I, excuse me, can work something out where, you know, we can speak with the folks here at the high school and at the middle school and talk to a few colleagues in some surrounding schools and get a sense of sort of where things lie in comparison, and even some of the schools in town. I think that's also a good recommendation. So just get some feedback. And then, and then from there, we could sort of have a needs analysis and have an understanding of where we are before we commit to a course of action, if that's all right.
Yeah, no, that would be great. That's why I did not have a specific language change, but just wanted to raise the point generally.
Dar's up. Sound good?
That sounds great. Sounds like a good plan.
Okay.
Good. Glad to do it.
All right. So we have a motion on the floor. And if I could have a vote on the goals, so let me get the language, sorry. Let me just get that.
Is that something before?
Yes.
I guess sort of in line with the guidance committee, maybe it's the same idea for a curriculum subcommittee, that something that allows us to take a look at, maybe the goals aren't the right place for it, but can we look at something like that that would give a sustained level of feedback, you know, this feedback coming in and going out to the school and home. I know some districts have curriculum subcommittees. I'm not sure if they're temporary, if they're ongoing. But as curriculum changes, as things change, there has to be a mechanism to allow input both ways.
So almost some communications planning around curriculum changes.
Well, specific to the content of, you know, like, to give an analogy, a school is like a restaurant, you know, serving food to our children. You see them in one way, we see them in another way. You know, we would allow everybody to get an idea. Sometimes we might hear something about their experience that you might not hear as it relates to scheduling, classes, content. So I don't know, along the same lines, subcommittee or something like that on curriculum.
Sure. So similarly, we can look at some other surrounding districts, some of our DURG schools and others, and get a sense of sort of that, that two-way communications and vehicles that people may be using and other ideas that may be out there, and come forward and see if there are some, some recommendations and some other things that grow up.
That would be great.
Sure.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. So now, if I could get a motion to approve, as a second read, the 2017-18 district goals as amended, as first moved and seconded by Ms. West and Ms. Ration, respectively, on August 21st, 2017.
I don't have a vote on the amendment.
Oh, did I just get, oh, I'm sorry. So, okay, so we had, okay, so we didn't vote on the amendment? I thought we voted. It was unanimous.
Yeah.
We did. We voted. It was unanimous.
Yeah.
Sorry. I was like, wait. Thank you. Okay. So we have a motion on the floor. We've approved the amendment. So could I get a vote on the goals as amended? All those in favor? It's unanimous. All right. Okay. Thank you, everyone. Moving on to the 2008... Sorry.
Sorry. Can I just make a comment?
Yes.
I mean, as part of this process of discussing our goals and objectives, we just had to, you know, what could be fairly large tasks also suggested. And what I would just recommend is before we go out and form exploratory committees and really look at this and kind of the thorough way that I know, maybe as a first step, you and the cabinet go back and talk about the relative priority of those requests. I just feel like, I'm feeling like we're walking away from a very full plate here. And then on top of that, we just proposed two additional exploratory committees that could be very time-consuming. And I want to make sure that we're not, in fact, pulling away from what we just declared as our top priorities.
That's fair.
Okay. So maybe just as a first step, you...
Yeah, we will, we will talk it through. We will take a look and see what the resources are available, what the needs may be for this type of work, and we'll be, yeah, we'll be sure to prioritize. Yes. Yes. Thank you, Sherri.
Thank you.
I'm in full agreement with that. I mean, one of mine was, and it could just be that this is something with respect to my issue, that we should come back and look at in the next couple of years.
Right. I just, I just want to raise it.
I agree. I agree.
Okay.
Thank you, Sherri. Thank you, everybody. All right. Moving on, the next item on our agenda is the 2018 Board of Education Meeting Schedule, Second Read. We had a first read at our last meeting. And are there any other comments or questions about the schedule as proposed?
Again, the only thing I would say is that we added a second date in July.
Okay.
So that there's more flexibility if one date works and the other date doesn't. So we stayed away from the Fourth of July week and put it, I'm getting around the second and the third week, back-to-back there in July.
Okay. So I need to get that...
Just so we have them both.
Approved as amended, because that wasn't in the first read.
That was not in the first read, right.
Okay. So we need to get an amendment. Okay. So could I get, if there's no, is there any other discussion beyond that? Okay, seeing none, if I could get a motion to add a second Board of Ed meeting in July? Katrina, second? Sherry? All those in favor?
I saw that went very slowly. It's with the intent that it could be canceled.
Yeah, we expect to cancel one.
All right. I didn't see any opposed. All right. So if I could now have, if I could get a motion to approve as a second read, the 2018 Board of Education Meeting Schedule as amended and first moved and seconded by Ms. Richardson and Ms. Hobbs, respectively, on August 21st, 2017. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you. All right. Thank you, everybody. And is there anyone from the public who would like to speak? Seeing none, we will move on to announcements and future business. Dr. Lutzi?
Sure. And just very quickly, the, for our next meeting on the 18th of September, we'll be talking about the facilities. And you heard some of it from our principals tonight, but I should be speaking with Dan Clark and John Perna. And they'll be coming to talk about all of the great work that they've done and so thanks to everyone's cooperation and go through those projects, 70-some-odd projects. So bring a snack. Just can, we'll move through it relatively quickly. But we'll also hear from, if it all works out, we're meeting with them next week, to be sure. But my intention is to have Eversource come to the meeting as well to talk about the natural gas expansion that they're hoping to do and to go through those details. They're looking for the board to sign a contract with them in order to keep this process moving along. So I thought that best thing would be for them to come and present and share their, the information they have and findings and what have you. So they would come on the 18th, and then we'd look for some guidance for the board and what to do with that afterwards. We'll also look if, I can't have somebody here specifically speak to it, I'll do it myself. But to get an update on the fields and the projects that are going on here at the high school, as you pulled in, you might have seen that they're still working on the track, and the expectation is that they'll be doing that until early October. It's moving along on time, but I could have a little bit more information to share with you as well. So it'll be a night route, facilities and capital items and things like that, is what we have scheduled at this point. And again, just to thank the board and thank you for your annual invitation to our principals, so they can come and brag about their staff just a little bit and talk about their opening days, and hope that everyone's off to as great of a start as we are, because I think the year is underway. We're all doing very well. And it's great when all of the hard work that everyone puts in over the summer in preparation for opening day comes together. And, you know, anything, any little blips like a tree down with power lines and a fire, we reroute the buses, solve the problem, and it doesn't put a cloud on anyone's day. So it all worked out very well, thanks to everyone's preparation. And thank you for all of yours.
Thank you. All right. So if I could get a motion to adjourn? Brendan, second? Penny, all those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.